We're not at a quorum, right? We're not at a quorum, right? Oh, Stutzman's is back again. Maybe I'll get my way this year. I think I should leave it. I mean, you know, I just, I hate the way that lot looks when it's not up, to be honest with you. I really do. I think it looks a lot better when it's there. And, you know, like I said, my parents live across the street and they're just, you know, best catty corner back over there on the island. And they're just like, we don't care.
You guys just could get to be audience.
Awesome. If I get a phone call, can I go ahead and take it?
No lack in a quorum, right?
Sidney said, and she responded back, she's supposed to be here.
I didn't, I wasn't bashful. Alyssa asked me.
I never heard anything from you of things. And I said, yes, from Quiznos. And I said, yes, I want the turkey bacon guacamole.
They didn't ask me!
She said she would be here, so maybe she's detained or something.
Yeah, we got a lot to go through.
No, we haven't got any more than deals.
I'm going to call the order for October 7th meeting of the Salina Planning Commission. And the first thing on our agenda is the Year 2008 Landscape Awards, and I'll turn it over to Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. This is, we'd like to welcome you to the Landscape Awards that are a combined effort of the City Planning Commission and the Tree Advisory Board. And the goal of this is to look out in the community and identify projects that have identified, that have contributed to the aesthetic appearance of the community and our built environment. And I want to introduce Steve Blue here, who is our city forester. And Steve, do you have any members of the Tree Advisory Board here that you'd like to introduce? Okay. This is a combined effort of the Tree Advisory Board that Steve works with and the Planning Commission to identify notable projects. So what we're going to do is give you kind of a brief description of the project, identify who was involved with that. And we also have a PowerPoint presentation. We'll try to give you illustrations of that. And if you want to go back one, Dustin. Every year, the Tree Advisory Board does what they call the Golden Leaf Award. And that is a particular project that they have picked out and want to sponsor. And this year, the project that they identified was the Reserves at Prairie Glen. And that is a mixed-use project that's on South Ohio, across from Jerry Ivy Park. And we refer to that as mixed-use because it is both an apartment complex, and then there's a 12,000-square-foot office building that's also along Ohio Street that's part of that project. And they designed that and intended it to be an affordable housing project for the community. It consists of six apartment buildings. Each of the buildings has 16 housing units in it. The other thing that's notable and that you can see from Ohio Street is it has a pool, a playground, and clubhouse space, which are amenities for residents. The most prominent features of the site are that there's extensive front yard landscaping along Ohio Street and around the clubhouse and pool area. They have a large number of parking spaces within the complex, but it's broken up by islands that contain trees. And then on the rear side, which abuts some single-family homes, they have a fence and tree buffer along there. You'll also note as you drive down South Ohio that there's an evergreen tree buffer that separates that from the First Southern Baptist Church. The Tree Advisory Board felt this project was worth special recognition because of the quality and the quantity of landscaping involved. It covers a large area. And especially, we're comparing that to some other housing projects in the community. This one really stands out. And also, what they've done there along Ohio Street does enhance that streetscape as we look forward to a widened Ohio that we can start driving on. The principal players in this, the owner is Overland Ventures of Overland Park, Kansas. Brett Johnson was the principal developer. Jones Gillum Rens, local architects, helped design and lay out the site. And then Earth Care Services Landscape Division was the contractor for the installation. So Steve, if you want to come forward and show everyone what the Golden Leaf Award looks like, and do we have anyone present here from Reserves involved in that project? Okay, would you come on up? Are you the manager?
I am the manager.
Okay. Steve's got this to present to you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Very good job.
Thank you.
And then Steve, do you have plaques for Earth Care and Jones Gillum? I think that's this one here. So Dan, do you want to come up? This is Dan Fiorella with Earth Care, and he was involved in the installation, so. Thanks, Dan. Is somebody here from Jones Gillum? I don't see anybody. Anybody here from Jones Gillum? Our second nominee is the facility that I think you're familiar with, the New Blood Platelet Center on West Prescott. And that is an office and institutional facility that is built on a residentially-zoned lot on Prescott Avenue. It's also in the Highland-Prescott 8th Street Historic District. Planning Commission reviewed a site plan and approved a conditional use permit for this facility in February of 2006. Although it is used as an office building, I think you can see from the photo and from driving by that the facility is very much residential in design and appearance. And the other thing that's notable is that the parking for this facility is off-site on the, most of the regional health center lots, and that allows for the grounds outside the building to be set aside as green space. It's a one-story structure. It has a lot of historical elements to it that blend in with the surrounding neighborhood. And it has a walkway with flowers and bushes and benches that connect back to the Medical Arts Building. And I think we had a photo that demonstrated that here. And we think this project is particularly notable because of the plantings around the base of the building, which accentuate the covered front porch. There was an effort also made to retain as many mature trees that existed on the site as possible. The other thing that's notable is in some of our neighborhoods where we have churches or other uses that abut single-family homes, we require a screening fence or some other type of buffer. But we agreed with the architect involved here that actually having a fence would detract from the site and how it blended in with the neighborhood. So as you look at that, the yard area for the Platelet Center blends in and transitions with the housing area to the west. And so we think that due to the size and scale and architectural design of the building and the real efforts to make the yard area and site blend in with the district, that this makes an attractive entryway into the historic district from Santa Fe. And the people we'd like to recognize are the Salina Regional Health Foundation, who developed this project, and that would be Tom Martin. And then Warren Edgar was the architect designer, and then Wallace Landscaping and Irrigation. So I see Tom here. If you'd like to come forward, Steve has a plaque he'd like to present you. And do we have anybody here from Wallace Architects? That's, Steve, that's for, Steve, that's for Warren. Yeah, let's switch them out. Our third nominee is the Advanced Auto Parts Store on South Broadway. And that particular area of town dates back to 1976, when that area was platted. It's known as the Park West Edition, includes Kmart, the former Food for Less store site. And in 1976, a building permit was issued for Burger King Restaurant on this site. And in 2006, the site was purchased by RMQ Development. And they had plans to demolish the Burger King Restaurant and construct a new auto parts store on the site. Because we were basically starting over with a complete redevelopment of the site, a landscape plan was submitted with their permit application. And what's back there today is a 6,700-square-foot store building with 39 paved parking spaces in the front. There's a landscape turf buffer along Broadway. And they made an effort, as you can see in the upper left-hand corner, to create kind of an island area that's landscaped at the base of the pole sign there. They also have ornamental and shade trees going up the north and south property lines, keeping them away from existing overhead lines. And if you drive the Broadway corridor and you look at the historical patterns there, front yard paving is a prominent feature. And the front yard landscaping that was installed as part of this project kind of broke from that historical pattern. And it does advance one of the commission's goals of beautifying the major commercial corridors in the city. So we think this is an example of what could occur as redevelopment occurs along that Broadway corridor. And this commission and the Tree Advisory Board has previously recognized McDonald's and Walgreens also in this corridor for their impact on the corridor. So our principals here are RMQ LLC, which was the developer of this project, Southwest Contractors out of Arkansas was the designer, and then Earth Care Services Landscape Division was the installer. If we have anybody here from Advanced Auto Parts? If not, I think Dan is here, and we've got something we want to recognize. So Earth Care Services was involved in the final installation there. Our final project that we wanted to recognize is the Solomon State Bank. And that's located at the corner there of Belmont and Magnolia. And this is probably a fact of interest that's more for interest of the Planning Commission. But what we had there were three lots that were really platted as residential lots in 1958 in the Belmont Edition. And they sat vacant for a long period of time. But basically, the Belmont Edition is bordered by Belmont, Ohio, and Magnolia, and every lot in there was intended for single-family residential use. But in 1961, there was an application filed with the Planning Commission to rezone this for a gasoline service station. And that was denied. And then there were requests denied again in 1962, 1969, 1986, and 1989 to develop this as a gasoline service station. And at one point, the Planning Commission asked the City Commission to just buy it and use it as a sign area or an entryway feature. But basically, what you had is three lots that nobody wanted to build houses on, but the owners nearby didn't want to see gasoline service station there and fought off all the attempts to commercialize that corner. But then Solomon State Bank came forward with a plan to build a bank here, and it was an alternative to housing, but it was acceptable to the neighbors. It blended in with the site real well. And the Planning Commission approved that project in 1995. And the property's bordered on streets by three sides. All three sides are landscaped. There's 19 trees and a variety of shrubs and ornamental grasses there. There's a berm along Saxwood. And there's also a detention basin there that hardly anybody notices because it's landscaped and blends in with the rest of the area. So because of the scale and location of the bank building and the ample yard areas, it's been an asset to that neighborhood. We think this project's notable. One, it was one of the first projects that was done after the Planning Commission adopted landscaping regulations, and it has stood the test of time. The landscaping has been well-maintained over that period. So we want to recognize Solomon State Bank as the owner and Dennis Riordan as president. Randall Clark of McPherson was the designer for the project, and then Wallace Landscaping and Irrigation. We have anybody here representing Solomon Bank? And we have Wallace Landscaping again we want to recognize. I think that will conclude our presentation for Landscaping Awards for 2008. And we appreciate working with Steve and the Advisory Board. Oh, I'm sorry. We have representatives of the Randall Clark Architects here also. So that would be our awards for 2008. We appreciate the input that we get from Steve and the Tree Advisory Board. And we certainly welcome input from planning commissioners and others as projects they think are particularly well-done or have stood the test of time. So thank you for everybody who participated.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to the award winners. You have helped beautify our city, and it's much appreciated. Ready to go, Dean?
Yes. I can transition to our regular agenda.
Okay. Okay, that took care of item number one. Item number two is approval of the regular minutes of the September 16th meeting. Any comments, or do I hear some action?
I'd make a motion we approve the minutes.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Dean, can we go ahead with the agenda as printed?
We can. We don't anticipate any action on items three and four, but we should open the hearing on item three, and then we can explain the status of that project.
Item number three, Public Hearing on Application Number PDD 08-3 filed by Larry Curran requesting amended preliminary and final development plan approval, any change in underlying zoning district classification from C2 Neighborhood Commercial to R2 Multiple Family. And I'm not going to read the long description. This is all in Georgetown addition to the city of Salina. The request is located between Fairdale Road and Georgetown Road, north of Crawford Street, but does not include track number one, which is the Quick Trip, or track number two, BWR Incorporated of the Georgetown Village PDD. This item is continued from the September 16th meeting. Staff report?
As a commission, you conducted a public hearing on this request, and the basic request was to rezone property that today is zoned for neighborhood shopping uses and to rezone that for townhome development. And you had a public hearing on that and got some public feedback, as well as discussion with the applicant. And what you did at the conclusion of that hearing was you indicated to the applicant and the, those in attendance, that the commission did support the proposed land use change, and that you were also supportive of the variations and exceptions for the townhome development that the applicant was requesting. But you postponed action and consideration of the actual development plan to allow some technical issues to be addressed by the applicant and his design firm. Where we are today is that we do have revised plans in. They address some, but not all of the technical and layout issues. And after consulting with the applicant, we recommended that this public hearing be continued again to the October 21 meeting. And the companion item, which is with this, is the replat of that same area, and we would recommend the same action on that. So what we would like to do, if there's anyone present here from the public who's following this particular case, is to have a formal action by the commission that would postpone consideration of this to October 21. And then they would have an opportunity to know that this will be taken up again at that time.
Since this is a public hearing, and we will be postponing it, there may be someone here who would like to speak to this application. And this is your opportunity to do that. You can also be able, you'll also be able to do that in two weeks at the October 21st meeting. But is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Okay. Then the public hearing for today is closed. I think we need a motion to postpone it to...
If we could have a motion to postpone items three and four to the 21st agenda.
Can we do that all in one motion?
Yep.
Okay.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone items three and four to October 22nd. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Carried. Postponed. Item number five, Application Number CU 08-8 filed by the Stiefel Theater requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow a permanent drinking establishment license to be issued in C4 Business District on property legally described as lots 133, I think, lots 135 and lot 137 on Santa Fe Avenue in the original town of Salina. So, Saline County, Kansas. The subject property is addressed as 151 South Santa Fe Avenue. Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a conditional use permit application, and such is a scheduled public hearing. And it's a little bit different because we are talking about what is essentially and primarily an entertainment venue, but they are seeking a permanent drinking establishment license. And by definition, both in our zoning code and in the state statutes, a drinking establishment is an establishment which may be open to the general public where alcoholic liquor by the drink is sold. And so the supplemental use that's being proposed here is the Stiefel Theater seeking a permanent drinking establishment license. They have applied for a license through the state, and their goal is to have that permanent license in place so they can allow the service of alcoholic beverages at sponsored events or private events that might be renting space in the theater. What is proposed would be done on a limited scale, and it would be, of course, supplementary to the principal use of the property, which is a performing arts theater. The serving area that they're proposing, discussing, is the Watson Room, and that's the area to the west of the theater auditorium itself along the Santa Fe street front. And their plan is that they would, at various events, have a portable bar staffed with professional bartender or bartenders. And the plan would be that they would serve alcohol an hour to 30 minutes before a scheduled event, and if that event had intermissions, that would also be available during that time. The ideas are that the areas that would be the consumption areas would be the Watson Room and the public lobby areas, probably including the mezzanine area above. So this is the floor plan of the building, and John has highlighted there the Watson Room. This is a stairway there. This is a lobby and a foyer outside the auditorium area. There's also a set of steps over here that goes up to the balcony seating area. There's a kind of a mezzanine lobby there, and, which is located here, and that would be considered an extension of the public lobby or foyer area. As proposed, no alcoholic beverages would be allowed to be taken into or consumed in the performance auditorium or the balcony area itself. They have expressed an interest in possibly serving alcohol on the stage area for private tours or receptions. In addition to the sponsored events, they've also indicated they'd like to make the Watson Room available for rental for private events, and people would have the option of using a Stiefel furnished bartender or, which is common in other venues, is to have a caterer who possesses a caterer's liquor license, and then they cater the event. I think you're familiar that due to its location within the C4 district and the fact that a permanent drinking establishment license is being requested, that there needs to be review and approval by the Planning Commission of the proposed location. And your primary role is to look at whether the use, additional use proposed, the sale and serving of alcoholic beverages, would have a negative impact on the public or the surrounding property. I think we're all familiar with the C4 district, which provides for a broad range of uses, including theaters. And then in the conditional use category is the term drinking establishment, which I defined. And after, or effective 2001, any drinking establishment that someone was proposing in the downtown area needed to apply for and have a conditional use permit approved. That was modified earlier this year to basically exempt out establishments that had food sales. In other words, that also served as restaurants. They are no longer subject to the conditional use requirement. But each drinking establishment is supposed to be reviewed by the Planning Commission on a case-by-case, location-by-location basis. And we have not have any specific requirements for drinking establishments in the downtown area, but in 2001, the Planning Commission adopted some criteria for evaluating drinking establishments, and we have attached that to your report. Items that you are to consider would include the welfare and convenience of the public. One thing we do know is that the hours are established for events, that there are going to be scheduled performances, and so beverages would be served based on the scheduled time of the performance. What we know a little less about is the type of rental events that might occur, and if there's any time limits or restrictions envisioned on when and how late those rental events might occur. We did note in our report that there are some public safety considerations that staff looks at and does come into play when you're talking about sales and consumption in an area where you have, could have a capacity crowd of nearly 1,300 people. And so we look at egress points, we look at emergency lighting, we look at having easily identifiable exits, smoke detectors, and building sprinkling. And items like smoke detectors provide for early warning, sprinklers retard the fire spread, which allows the people more time to exit. Not every portion of the Stiefel... Not every portion of the Stiefel Theater is sprinkled, but we have had discussions between city staff and, and Stiefel staff about looking at the serving layout and perhaps even converting. Right now, you have an exit door here and here. These doors here are actually painted shut and are ornamental, but not functional. And one of the discussion items that's ongoing is, is how viable it is to convert those to emergency exits as well. Because when you receive a liquor license, the health department also issues a food license because of some sanitary requirements, the Stiefel Theater has added a three-compartment sink and a hand sink to their Watson Room area to comply with those health codes. I think what we're looking at is the serving area, the Watson Room is, is relatively small when you compare it. You can accommodate, according to the ocament load, about 175 people in the Watson Room and that would compare to a capacity of 1,300 in the theater itself. There's no fixed dance floor in the Watson Room, but you might envision some musical performances there if, if it was used for receptions or events. And I think that's one, again, in addition to hours or time limits, if the representatives of the theater had any additional information about what they do in the way of supervision or security arrangements, if they have private rental events, I think that could help with the decision-making process. The addition of alcohol sales shouldn't impact parking. The people are already there. It's just a function of, of service to the people who are there for an event. So what, what we've done and we've given you a slightly supplemental report that, that summarized the facts or factors there with the Stiefel and the Watson Room. Again, your, the Watson Room has about 2,000 square feet of area and it's rated for an ocament load of 175. The auditorium capacity's 1,300. There's no full kitchen or food service facility at the Stiefel. They do have a kitchenette in the Watson Room. There's no fixed dance floor, but it's possible that someone might create one for a private event. Live music might occur based on what sponsored event or reception might be occurring there. They have no outdoor serving area. Their hours of operation are going to be based on scheduled performances and, and the rental policies that they come up with. They are not in close proximity to a church or school or daycare center or youth activity center. There are lofts in that block of Santa Fe, but there's none adjacent to the theater and they're not in close proximity to any other drinking establishments. The closest one is the Ultra Lounge, which is also on the east side of South Santa Fe. In terms of your alternatives, after applying the guidelines for reviewing drinking establishment requests and you conclude that this is an appropriate and suitable location for a permanent drinking establishment license, you could approve the application without any special conditions. You could approve the application subject to any conditions or revisions to their plan that you think are appropriate. You could postpone consideration on this item if you think you need additional information before taking action. Or you could deny the application if you think that the required findings cannot be made or this would be incompatible with neighboring uses. Based on the relative low intensity of the use compared to the theater, we would recommend approval of this application. And we have three recommended conditions and I'll, I'll try to explain what that means. Condition number one, when we say corresponding to the approved floor plan, the approved floor plan essentially means that you would take an area here, which is the theater proper, and we're saying that the conditional use permit does not cover or extend to that area. In other words, that the, the auditorium and the balcony is not part of the licensed premises for sale or service of alcohol. On item two, we're talking about if there are substantial modifications or, to the internal features, so if they wanted to go outside the Watson Room and, and establish a supplemental serving station or area, that would need to be reviewed by appropriate city staff and considered as an amendment to the conditional use permit. And then fourthly, or actually, the, the third condition is that we would look at in the use of the Watson Room as a serving area, that it needs to be set up in a way that the egress points are, are not blocked, that if they have the stand-up tables or any chairs, they need to be set up in a way that facilitate the flow of people into and out of the room from the theater lobby, that the portable bar that they set up be as close to the hand sink as possible, but not block the handicap ramp or, or handrails to the stairs. And that we will continue to work with the Stiefel Board and staff to enhance guidelines for how that room is laid out and life safety features and exiting capacity for the Watson Room. And I just might note that city staff, including fire department personnel, have been over working with the theater staff and, and looking at suitable ways to, to lay that room out. That's going to be a work in progress and they have a scheduled event, Las Lobos, on October the 18th and the fire department will be working with them to, to get that area set up to meet those guidelines. I think the other thing I might note that in the past and what state law allows, it allows any venue to have temporary events and you can get what's known as a temporary liquor license for a particular event, but those are limited to four per year in any venue or location. And they felt that was too limiting for the types of events that they were having over a calendar year, so that's one of the reasons for seeking the permanent drinking establishment license so you wouldn't be limited to four single events. So with that, I think I would be available to address any questions about the report or particularly about what area it is we're referring to. Again, basically, we're, the idea is that you would not have service or consumption in the auditorium proper or the balcony, but that even if serving occurred in the Watson Room, people would be in the lobby, foyers and other areas able to, to move around and, and have that service available. So I, again, I think with that, I'd be happy to address any questions and we do have representatives of the theater here, both staff and board, that can address questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Any questions of staff? You did a good job, huh? Okay, we'd like to hear from the applicant. Do you give us your name and address and maybe what your title is?
Well, I'm Jane Gates and I'm the executive director of the Stiefel Theater and we're located, do you want my personal address or? 2144 Hillside Drive is my personal address. I live in Salina. And with me here are Bruce Wyatt, who is on our Board of Directors, and Suzanne Hoke, who's the chairman of our Board of Directors, Craig King, and then Bill Tezika, who is our technical director and operations director. So I am the executive director, I think I said, of the Stiefel Theater. I just want to thank the city of Salina for the meetings that we've had, Roger from the fire department, Melissa from also the health department. We have really appreciated the care and consideration because this is important, that this be done correctly and we take it very seriously. But we have applied, as you know, for a conditional use permit so that we can serve alcohol at our concerts. We are a self-supporting organization and the sale of alcohol does help our bottom line a little bit and it also, we believe, enhances the, the concert-going experience and that's something that we're committed to in every way. So we believe that coming to a show and being able to purchase a drink before the show, you know, usually you've had a ticket price, people are out with babysitters and it's, it's something that adds to the concert. Most theaters also, like the Stiefel Theater around the country, have converted and gone through very similar processes in order to be serving alcohol. So it is something that we hope to do and, and again, it's a rather limited scale. We by no means are offering a full bar. It's typically like beer, maybe one or two different kinds of wine and then maybe one mixed drink. And as Dean said, these are not, the drinks are not allowed to go into the auditorium so typically the, the bar service happens before the concert. Also, if there's an intermission at some shows, we do have the bar open during that time as well.
How are you going to enforce that issue, not in, no drinks in the auditorium?
Well, we have a, a strong staff of ushers as well as hired security that works every show for us and they all understand, we've also worked closely with the ABC people about this. The bartenders are trained that they absolutely have to card people if there's any question about their age and we absolutely will not serve anyone who appears that they have been over-served. So, and then our security personnel is keeping people from going out onto the street and it's primarily our ushers who are keeping people from going into the auditorium. So that's kind of how we're monitoring it.
Okay. Other questions?
So on a balmy evening, you can't take anything outside onto the sidewalk?
No.
What about, I guess my concern comes with the private events. Will that be, every event will be considered separately and?
Oh, definitely. What we have ongoing now, for example, is that the Salina Symphony uses the Watson Room after their concerts for a private event where I believe they serve champagne. If it is a private event like that, you know, they're usually supplying their own alcohol as long as it's not open to the public. But then, you know, we have never had the request for a Stiefel bar yet at a, at a rented Watson Room event, but I suppose if...
Well, but you've had wedding receptions.
Right. And if it's, according to the ABC law, if it's a private event like that, you know, they are allowed to provide their own alcohol. However, they also have to understand that because we have a liquor license, they have to be very careful to not serve anyone that has, you know, had too many.
So that is, in fact, the case, a pri, a caterer who has a liquor license.
A caterer who has a liquor license can go to locations. If you have a Pheasants Forever banquet at the 4H Building and a caterer is catering a meal, they can also, under their, if they have a liquor license, they can also provide drinks there. If the Salina area cat backers have a meeting and they have a catered meal and that caterer has a liquor license, then they can serve at that private event. It becomes the, it becomes the license holder's responsibility.
We understand, though, that because we have a liquor license, that the rules for us are even a little stricter in that we have to be very, very careful to not serve anyone too much and let them leave there. So we have talked to our, our renters to explain how important that is. But as far as a renter for a private event using our bartenders, that would be available. It hasn't come up yet, but that would be available.
And what about the staff's concerns about time limits, rental time limits and that kind of thing?
Time limits as far as, you mean?
I think our question is whether through your rental policies or guidelines, do you have limits that you can rent the facility till midnight or 11:00 PM or is it on an event-by-event basis?
It's an event-by-event basis. I know alcohol under no, no circumstance can be served after 2:00 AM. Most of the Watson Room rentals at this time are wedding receptions, meetings, that kind of thing.
But you, you've had rentals, and unfortunately, what sticks out is the incident that happened, was it New Year's Eve? That the facility had been rented out to a large...
Well, that, that, the shooting that you're referring to happened several hours after our event was done. It was out on the streets of Salina, so it was really under the jurisdiction at that point of the police, but that was after an event at the Stiefel out on the street, not really at our event.
I'm, I'm looking at these local definitions and one of the things that kind of struck me was this, drinking establishment is an establishment which may be open to the general public.
Yeah, that's a good point because the general public at a concert would not be coming in to buy alcohol. And that's one of the things that we talked quite a bit with the city about, just making sure that we're carefully monitoring that.
Are a lot of those by special invitation only?
Well, it's by a ticket. I mean, you have to have a ticket to come to a concert.
Okay, that, but even beyond that, aren't a lot of them with, by special invitation?
Yeah, but beyond that, every rental that we have, I mean, the city rented...
I guess I wasn't referring to rentals at this point, like concerts or things like that.
Anyone who would come into the Watson Room would need to purchase a ticket to go to the concert. And if it was a rented event, you would assume it was, well, if it's a public event, alcohol would not be served there and we will not be serving alcohol either at all of our concerts. I think it's important to say that. If it's a children's concert, we would not have alcohol there or a family event like that. You know, the puppets that are coming in February, we would not be serving alcohol.
You ever been around a bunch of kids? I think that'd be the perfect time to serve alcohol.
But I think it's, you know, that's kind of a case-by-case situation. The, the event that you're talking about, to my knowledge, there was not a caterer at that event, that night, that had an alcohol permit.
So you'd have to have some connection with the event in order to be permitted into the Watson Room?
Right. Exactly.
Some of the more vocal public opinions that we've heard allowing these drinking establishments but in the past have been from neighbors that say that they have had vandalism and, and things go on after the, the businesses have closed. Do you have any plans of addressing people leaving, like staff being outside or anything like that?
Well, we do usually have security outside after our concerts and most of our concerts are over by 9:30. So almost all Stiefel shows start at 7:30 and go till 9:30 or 10:00. The bar is shut down by then. So we don't have anyone lingering after a concert buying alcohol at this time, but we do sometimes have merchandise sales and that kind of thing after the show. But typically, pe, even with that, I mean, the latest I've ever seen people there after a show typically would be around 11 o'clock.
I saw some pretty unruly people when we left the Tommy Dorsey concert there.
No alcohol sales after the shows?
Up until this point, we have not, have, have not even had anyone wanting it. I mean, people tend to, no one's asked. So we've, last year, in fact, we shut down the alcohol sales when the shows began, but we did allow alcohol a year ago for all of last season into the auditorium. We made that decision on our own that that was the wrong thing to do. And so this year decided we will no longer allow alcohol into the facility, I mean, into the auditorium. There's a number of reasons why that doesn't work. For one thing, people were buying... For one thing, people were buying too much alcohol, bringing it in. People were in and out, and it was disruptive using the restrooms, spilling on the floor, that kind of thing. So, we just decided that is not the right thing to do for this beautiful theater. So, we will keep the bar open this year for the duration of the show, which will mean that you can have alcohol sales happen at intermission for those who choose to go into the Watson Room. But we will not be allowing it into the auditorium, and that, we have a number of ushers there, perhaps 10, 15, who all know that to keep people from going in with their drinks.
Now, you're going to have to have a supply, a storehouse of alcohol and liquor then, aren't you? In other words, you're going to have to have a supply.
Yeah, and the way we do it is, we do have a locked closet. That's what the ABC requires, is that you lock your inventory up and keep a very close count on what you have. And then we just order it usually before each show based on how many tickets have been sold. Typically, beer is what we have brought in and delivered.
Okay.
Dean, do you feel like she answered the questions about security for private rental events?
Yeah, we understood that there is onsite security for those. I think all we were really searching for is whether they had a standard guideline or whatever that, that had a predictable or across-the-board time limit for the private rental events, but I, I think what you're hearing is that, that it's going to be addressed on a, on a case-by-case, event-by-event basis.
Is your security provided by a private security firm?
Yes.
Any other questions of Ms. Gates? Anyone else in the audience like to speak to this? Anyone from the board?
Well, no, I just want to say, we have very much appreciated the cooperation. Same as echoing what Jane said, the whole board. This is, of course, a...
Could you come to the mic?
Come to the mic and...
I will.
Need to give us your name and...
Bruce Wyatt, and a board member of the Stiefel. And just wanted to echo Jane's thanking the Salina City staff for their cooperation in this because it is, there are many facets to be concerned with, and the board understands that. And, and we're recognizing the responsibility the board has for preserving something which is really quite a jewel in this town and which many of the people here have spent a labor of love on in restoring over these last years, and recognizing the responsibility of keeping it within that, the high standing of that. And, and so, the, the staff has been quite helpful and the board and Jane is executive director, quite cognizant of the need to, to maintain the standards which this city expects. And hopefully, that has been demonstrated here today, and we thank you for your consideration.
Are there liability issues associated with this that you have to take up with your insurance company or anything?
There certainly are. You, do you want to go?
Yes, there are.
We have insurance policies.
We just have to, we have an excellent policy with $3 million of liability at this point, and, but yes, it was very important that we make sure that that was included with our, our policy and underwriter. And, and again, we, we, you know, my concern is not only the building, but just the safety factor. And that was made so clear to me, especially by the ABC officer that, that met with us and how very, very serious it is. And I, you know, can't stress enough how important we take that and carding people and not over-serving people and that kind of thing. It's really just meant, you know, we're not a bar. I mean, we're, we're trying to provide something that enhances the experience of attending a concert, which is our mission, and just trying to make it a nice evening for people.
If this goes through today, what would be your timeline on this? By when would you have your license?
I spoke to the state. They actually called today and they have approved in our sending our state license. We do have the first show on October 16th, actually, not the 18th, which is Capitol Steps.
We are on a pretty tight timeline, so everybody's been kind of cooperating by getting everything kind of lined up and in the, in the chain of paperwork here. So, is, if, if the commission does approve this today, well, I think we'll be set to go and be approaching the city of Salina for their part of the license and hopefully in place by the end of next week.
One of the final steps in the licensing, the local step of that, there is a local license issued by the city clerk, and as part of that license is a, a signing or certification that the proposed site has all zoning approvals. So, by you, if you were to vote favorably on the conditional use permit today, that would allow me or someone else in city staff to sign that saying that the necessary zoning approvals had been approved.
Does this need to go to the city commission yet?
No, you are the decision-making body on this.
Any other questions of these two?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on this issue? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the bench and for discussion and possible action.
I think, again, what I would explain or amplify a little bit about our recommended condition three there is that the, it is a work in progress or ongoing where our fire marshal and other staff are just working with the Stiefel staff to get a, a layout and to try to get something, basically, especially for the scheduled performances, to have kind of a standard layout or floor plan for how that room is set up. And so, then it becomes predictable for people. Everyone knows where the exits are and that they're open and how the room's going to be set up on some predictable basis. And again, that there's going to be ongoing consultations with the fire department staff and the Stiefel staff to get those in place, and they've already been occurring and, and at least for the Lobos concert, the, the fire department's going to go over there in advance and help with the layout and setup of that event.
The, the issues with, with the exits are strictly with the Watson Room. There's nothing else with the rest of the theater?
It has to do with, with the Watson Room and just, just the fact that it has an occupant load of 175, but you could have a sell, sold-out performance of, of 1,300 in the auditorium, so you're going to have a turnover and an inter, interplay of people between the lobby foyer areas and the Watson Room. And so, it's just going to be something that's going to be looked at as, as this develops and just see what, what kind of attendance or what kind of percentage of, of attendees at, at the events are using the Watson Room. And if, if the exits there are adequate for 175 people, the question is if you start getting interplay of people more than that, we may look at working with them on creating those center two doors, again, as supplemental exits, but that's, that's what condition number three there is intended to convey, that we've had meetings with the board and staff, and it's, it's just going to be a, a work in progress as this plays out, and, and we're going to continue working with each other to work that layout and those guidelines out.
I would also assume the board of directors is going to monitor this real close the first year or two to see how it works and make adjustments as necessary as time goes along. So, I have, I have confidence in them. Any further questions, discussion?
What if happens if there's been, there is a problem? Can we decline it again or how does that work?
Well, what, what this does is that a, basically, once a drinking establishment is approved through a conditional use permit, be it Big Nose Cates or whatever the, the venue might be, that it, it runs with that location and it allows them to keep their drinking establishment license reviewed. But if we have a, a city ordinance or we have, have one of these conditions of approval whereby the conditions under which this were approved were to change dramatically, then there is a means by which a conditional use permit can be revoked if there's a failure to adhere, adhere to the conditions under which it was granted. It, it's always a last resort and it doesn't happen very often, but the word conditional means it's approved, subject to certain conditions and understandings, and if those are no longer present, then it's, it's potentially up for review, but it's not automatic. What, once, what you are saying today is that you think this is a suitable location for the sale of alcoholic beverages, and that will allow them to get their permanent license, and that would continue indefinitely unless there's a dramatic change of conditions. And what the other condition, condition two is, is designed to address is if a serving station was added at the upstairs mezzanine or in some other change to the, the layout or, or current plan, then that would need to be revisited. But otherwise, your vote today would allow them to get their permanent license, which they can carry indefinitely as long as they adhere to those conditions and to the requirements of the ABC for maintaining a license.
Any further discussion?
Well, Kerry Nation, I am not. So, I suggest we approve application CU-08-8 filed by the Stiefel Theater with the above conditional attachments.
That we have on page two of this supplemental handout. Three conditions.
Three conditions.
Okay, I assume that was a motion?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Second?
Second. Before we vote, any further discussion? Any questions, anything you want to talk about? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Boy, this is a two-page agenda.
I haven't had one like that for a long time.
Stapled about, didn't make it...
Item number six. Application number P-81-7B filed by Compro Realty on behalf of Site Medical Partners LLC, requesting approval of a replat of Lot 1, Block 1 of the Lundberg Edition into three commercial building lots. The subject property is a 10.49 acre tract of land located at the northeast corner of Cloud and Ohio Streets to be known as Meadow Point Edition. Staff report, report please, Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the second plat in 2008 that the planning commission has looked at, or replat, rather, of, of property that the plating dates back to 1981 and has remained vacant that, that entire time. But our, our parcel that we're looking at is a single platted lot today, Lot 1, Block 1 of the Lundberg Edition, and it lies squarely on the corner of Ohio and Cloud Street, particularly the northeast corner. And again, this was platted as one large lot. The original Lundberg Edition was a 15 acre tract, and actually, at the time that it was platted, the area or the lot to the east, which is Lot 2, was set aside entirely as a temporary drainage easement, which meant that development was prohibited altogether because there was not a, a specific plan for what development would occur on the site. And in 1990, the planning commission considered a conditional use permit application from a manual four-square church, and their goal was to construct a church on the southern portion of Lot 2. So, a drainage study was done and a drainage easement was released on the south 325 feet of Lot 2, and there was a detention basin that was constructed behind the church. And as originally constructed, it was designed and intended to serve the church only, but the drainage easement that was in place there was designed to be large enough so that the pond could eventually be sized that would serve the, both lots, Lot 1 and Lot 2, and be a shared detention basin. No development of Lot 1 has been proposed since that time and since it had final zoning and plating approval in 1982. The zoning designation is C3 Shopping Center District. We have had a drainage analysis that's been prepared by the applicant's engineer, Pete Earls, because Lot 1 is, is now being proposed to be replatted and developed, and because this area is in a critical drainage area that exists east of Ohio Street. So, what we're looking to address through the replat is, we're looking to divide Lot 1 into multiple building lots, pin down our access points on Ohio Street, look at possible extension or vacation of remaining Claflin Avenue, looking at the drainage study for Lot 1 and determining if it meets the city's drainage requi, requirements, and looking at any easements that need to be dedicated, and then looking at detention pond design. And there's a plan in place for installing a pump and a storm pipeline that would divert water to the west instead of the east. When this was laid out originally, it was bordered by Cloud on the south and Claflin on the north and Ohio on the west. The Claflin was vacated east of Ohio, except the west 150 feet, which has remained in place. It is still a public street, so there's several options there. One would be to extend it, one would be to, to terminate it in a cul-de-sac, one would be to eliminate the rest of it. And at the time of plating, there was restricted access on Ohio Street entirely, and a part of this was that there was no specific plan for what was going to occur on Lot 1, so it was restricted so that any access openings could be looked at on a case-by-case basis. And, and earlier this year, in May of 2008, the city commission looked at a request to establish a single driveway location on Ohio Street, and that request was approved, subject to three conditions, and basically a large piece of frontage was set aside as a possible driveway location to give the applicant and developer some flexibility as to where that driveway would be located on the frontage. What we need to discuss today is whether, at this point, we're ready to actually pin down that location and show it on the replat. One thought is that it might straddle the lot line between lots in one and two, but we would need to hear from the applicant.
Dean, just quickly about that. Why did that not come also through the planning commission?
Because it involved the use of the vacation. It was not a, a plating item per se, but there's a, a vacation process that allows easements, alleys, and in this case, restricted access to be vacated by action of the city commission. And so, if somebody has a petition to vacate the alley or a easement or restricted access, there's a process, petition process by which that goes to the governing body, and it's, it's done by ordinance. There are some community, the statutes allow you to designate the planning commission as the, the body to consider that, but historically, the governing body has, has addressed those in, in Salina.
Okay.
And so, the idea here is that you have a 10 acre plus lot. There are two small lots that are proposed along Ohio at 2.1 and 1.7 acres respectively. Lot 2 is on the corner, and then in behind that is a lot... Lot 2 is on the corner, and then in behind that is a lot, a larger lot, that's about six and a half acres, and that has its own frontage on Cloud Street. So there's some flexibility. Lots 1 and 2 could be combined later if there was a need for a larger building site, or the lots could be split or divided once by Dean without replating. The current utility situation is that we have utilities on the perimeter on Ohio Street and in Cloud Street, but no interior utilities. There's also an eight-inch water line that goes down vacated Claflin, and it serves the Sterling House and Willow Grove Apartments, which are on East Kerwin. There is a sanitary sewer in Ohio Street, and there's also a sewer in Cloud. Part of the plating and part of the need for looking at easements is there will be a need to tie the water services together, to have some internal water lines and to create a loop situation. There'll also be a need to extend the sewer service into the site, and so most of the easements have been established. I don't know that the complete loop, especially for what might be needed for Lot 3, has been designed or thought through at this time. So what you're looking at is that you have water lines on the perimeters, but that there would be a need to loop water through here so that you would have both water service and lines for fire hydrants and fire protection. The same would go for electricity and gas, which would need to be extended into the So up in the corner here is the detention basin. That, I think our report indicates that that may need to be expanded in the future. Actually, we believe that it has been deepened and expanded already. There's just no record drawing for that, but originally, the pond was approximately five feet deep, and it was sized for the church only. It has been excavated and deepened some at this point, but no confirmation as to what design size it's at or whether those improvements meet all the city's design criteria, but basically, the runoff from this area would go back to that pond area. And in 1999, there was a three-way agreement approved between the church, the owners of Lot 1, and the city, and what that agreement called for was the installation of a pump and a pipeline that would pipe the pond water back to Ohio Street. And part of the rationale for that was that the drainage basin that goes to the northeast is overloaded, and there's only one point there where water can get through the levee over to the river, and so the idea was to divert the control discharge and take it over to Ohio Street as an alternative. So what we'd be looking at in the way of dedications through this plat, all the right-of-way for Ohio and Cloud are in place. There's no need for a dedication. The status of the leftover right-of-way for Claflin needs further discussion with the owner. What we're referring to is there's an opening here for Claflin and extends in 150 feet. If that was done to preserve options or flexibility there, one option would be to simply vacate it at this point and essentially have a driveway approach, and everything else would be private. Another option would be to extend it, and a third option would be to put some sort, make it a public street, extend it a point, and then terminate it. So that needs some additional discussion with the owner and applicant today. It looks like the needed utility easements for extensions have been provided on the plat. The drainage easement on Lot 2 is large enough to accommodate pond expansion, and then the only other question is, has this driveway location within here been pinned down so that driveway 45-foot opening could be shown on this plat? This area is envisioned for future C3 development, which could be retail, could be office, or could be service uses such as restaurants, and our recommendation would be to approve this replat with the understanding that design plans for the public water line and any public sanitary sewer line extensions that would come into the site would need to be reviewed and approved by the Director of Utilities, and those extensions would either need to be installed or guarantees in place, such as a benefit district petition assuring that they would be completed before any permits were issued for structures in this subdivision. And item two there is really be the responsibility of the applicant's design engineer to furnish, for our city engineer's approval, construction plans for a pump station and a pipeline that would go along the north boundary line of this property and take the pond discharge over to Ohio. And one thing we noted, the only easement that's lacking on the plat currently would be a drainage easement for that pipeline to come over to Ohio. And then if there's internal construction there, the fire department would want an internal weather emergency access road and access to a fire hydrant before any vertical construction started on the interior of this subdivision. And then the situation, I think we appear to be in with the pond is that it looks like, from our observations, that the pond has been excavated and deepened. We don't know under whose direction necessarily, or whether that was following an engineered plan, but the pond was five feet deep. Now it's 13 feet deep, so it has been expanded, but we would want to confirm that that expansion met the city's design criteria. Usually, you would have a civil engineer design the pond with the proper bottom and side slopes and the berms around the outside, so we would want some confirmation by the developer's engineer that the pond as modified meets the city's design criteria. So I think in terms of discussions with the applicant on the replat, the three items would be, do we know the pinned-down location of the driveway access to Ohio at this point, or does that need to be shown still as some flexibility in that? Does the developer envision or have any need for Claflin remaining, and if not, that should be vacated as part of this replat? And then the third item would be completion of the drainage improvements, and so we would need the applicant's design engineer to size and design that pump, and the agreement envisioned a benefit district created for the pump and the pipeline over to Ohio Street. And so the other thing that it envisioned was that that would either be in place or we'd have a petition in place to ensure that would happen before any building permits were issued. So I think with that, I'd be open to any questions, and then we'd want to hear from the applicant about Claflin, about the driveway in Ohio, and about the modifications that have occurred with the pond.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Any questions of staff?
Yeah, I do. Dean, in your notes here, you say that the pond design expansion is a responsibility of the developer, as is the pump station. Who's responsible for maintenance of that?
There is a maintenance covenant in place in long term, once it's been determined that the pond has been constructed to city design criteria. The church will actually be responsible for the long-term maintenance of that pond. It is on their property, but it's a shared pond. And part of the rationale for that, that it is this developer's responsibility to make those final improvements to the pond, to pay for the pump, and the city has agreed to pay for the cost of the pipeline out to Ohio, but those improvements also benefit the church, but there's a maintenance covenant in place that makes the church the long-term maintenance responsibility.
Where does that pond drain to now?
Suppose we have an aerial photo, John, but what it does is it comes out this side. It meanders up between Austin Circle over here and the property to the other side, so this is the pond, and this is a drainage easement through here. It turns here, pretty much bypasses this pond, goes under Courtney, goes over to Eastgate, makes a turn there, and goes up to the levee. And so the water that comes out of that pond has to go a long ways to the northeast to get through the levee.
And that isn't going to work with this additional development, the paving and this additional development?
Well, if you are familiar with that area at all, it already is overloaded today, and the thought was, at least at the agreement that was reached in 1999, was if Lot 1 develops with commercial uses, that will increase the size, the volume of the pond and the discharge volume, but not the rate. But the idea was that let's not make it worse, so the idea was that you would pump it west to the storm sewers in Ohio and not further aggravate that downstream drainage here, because Ricky Circle and Eastgate Drive and Beloit and Courtney and a number of those streets are underwater on a fairly regular basis when you have a very substantial rain, and part of that is because all this water is trying to get down through that system and get through one opening in the levee. So the idea was, let's not make it, let's not add to that when Lot 1 develops. Let's divert the water. The other reason is if the pond's 13 feet deep, it has to be pumped. It's not going to leave the pond by gravity, so the idea is as long as you're going to pump it, let's pump it west, and that's why the city agreed to pay the cost of the pipeline over to Ohio. It's kind of an incentive.
Is there much grading that will have to be done to prepare the site for? You said something about a portion in the floodplain and...
Just based on the current survey of the property, there's a little, and you have that preliminary plat, John. There's a little piece, corner right here, that is below the 100-year flood elevation, while some simple grading or redistributing of some of that dirt will eliminate that low spot and take it out of the picture, but right now, just based on this plat of existing conditions, there's just a small pocket there, which the surveyor is obliged to show.
Any other questions? Could we hear from the applicant or his representative? Your name and address?
Jeff Mace, 157 South 7th, Compro Realty.
Okay.
To the first question regarding Claflin, I did speak with the adjacent property owner this afternoon to make sure that we were clear. We had talked months prior, and just to make sure I wouldn't communicate anything to you all that was inaccurate, but we are planning on, between the two of us, going ahead and vacating the balance of that 150 feet, making that a private drive and improving it along with the development, so it'll become private. That was a discussion that we had had prior to closing on the property, and I confirmed that with the Ryans again today.
And how far do you anticipate that would come back into your property?
I think a better, can you look at that, the site plan, proposed site plan?
One of these shows that...
This will help with some of this, this item. Really with that, and we need to work this out with the Ryans to determine what kind of access and how much depth they're going to want there, but you can see how we're planning on using it currently. I think if you note that, that the dotted line does show that going ahead and being vacated and being shared. So we'll, on our side of it, we'll bring it in to service the development, both in the rear and to come into the shops at Meadow Point up front.
The way that's divided today is about 38 feet of it is on this property, and 22 feet of the right-of-way is on the Ryan property to the north, so it's actually a shared right-of-way, and so if it were vacated, basically, 22 feet of that would revert back to the Ryan property, and 38 feet would revert back here, and then they'd have the option of building a road entirely on the inside property, or working something out to have a roadway that was shared on both properties.
There's going to be a number of cross-access easements throughout the property by virtue of ownership, and at the end, you know, once we get completed, the conversation we've had is just to have a cross-access easement with the Ryans for the use of that entrance. So they don't have any immediate plans still. They're still kind of waiting to see what the future brings. They want to maintain that access, but I think we can work that out with them.
So what that would involve is just simply modifying the plat so that this notch of right-of-way would be cut back basically to the Ohio line there, and then from then on, any roadway there, we'd still want that as an access point, but it would simply be a private driveway and no attempt to build that as a public street or to a public street standard.
But there would be an opening onto Ohio at that point, and then another one about halfway to Cloud?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and that was our other access-related question, is that what the City Commission action did was basically create a area from here down where you would have a range in there of places where a driveway could be located, and since we are going through a replat process, if, based on this plan, that driveway location is known, then that could be depicted on this replat. If it's not known, then we would just show the same thing that John had on his drawing earlier, which would show an opening that had a range in it. So for plating purposes, the question's whether the plat's going to look like this with this, or whether the plat would actually show where the driveway would actually be. Are you at a point where you've still got flexibility in your design and you want to maintain that?
Well, only to the end that, I mean, we're, as I'm sure you all are aware, we're pursuing the Meadow Shop. The shops at Meadow Point are going to happen where they are, so to that end, I mean, it's going to make that entrance off very near where that is. Further, we are very close to formalizing our agreement with the hard corner, which in turn will, I'm 90% sure that's where it's going to be, to lock that down today, and it may be before we even get through the final plat process, that we can do that, but the stuff up front is very close to being formalized and finalized, but I think largely by virtue of where the shops at Meadow Point are going to be located, that's going to dictate where that entrance is, so.
Well, we have until it's plotted on a final Mylar to adjust that, but I just wanted to clarify that there's a range in there that they are allowed to build a driveway. We think it's going to be in about that location. If, before we get to the plotted Mylars, we know where that 45-foot opening's going to be, then we'll show it. If not, we'll leave that area open.
And by that point, I would imagine we will be able to do that, Dean. Part of the reason that it occurred in the fashion in which it did is it was a closing condition to buy the corner to make sure we were going to be able to get, make, or gain an access point there at some point, because it was all restricted, and if we needed to work around that, that was going to be an element of the negotiation. So we were able to get, file approval from the commission that we could get that access point so we could move forward with closing.
And then the other thing you were going to look into is if we knew the origin of the deepening or expanding of the pond, and the reason for that was that we had, in our files, the only record drawing we have of that pond... have of that pond was as constructed by the church where it was five feet deep. And we've confirmed that it's, it's 13 feet deep now. So it has been deepened and expanded. But we would want a civil engineer to look at that and just look at, at the bottom, the side slopes, ingress and egress points, just to make sure that our final product meets the city's design criteria.
I've not gotten a final answer to that question. I've made some phone calls. Some people think they know, but we'll, we'll, we'll have Peter Ware that, that this needs to be identified. We can have him go in there and certify that it's built to specifications and all that prior to final plat. So we're aware of what needs to be done there and I, I hate to speak to it. I have some people think, think they knew, but I don't want to make a commitment to that end, but they're, uh, Peter Ware that he's going to need to go in and say, yes, it's built to specifications.
I think we're just going to ask Mr. Earls to provide us an as-built design drawing of the modifications that were made.
And you're amenable to the drainage improvements that, that we've talked about?
Yeah, there's some question and part of all of that, as Dean indicated, that was a part of an agreement back in 99. There has been some conversation about at what point is that going to be triggered because of the size of the pond, uh, the improvement of the lift station in the apple and actually the line going in. Uh, because of the, the pond is so overly sized, we've kind of broke it by virtue of this plat somewhat and, you know, the shops at Meadow Point's going to happen first. Uh, there's, there's a due diligence period on the hard corner, but even, even if the front develops, we're still talking about a third of, of the entire parcel. And at what point does the expense and, and all of that have to go into that pump station? Can we let it naturally drain into that pond being oversized and so on and so forth? Some of the conversations that, that Mr. Earls has had with the city engineering department. But I think we've all, we're all in agreement that the benefit district needs to be formed. And, and I think, uh, in the, in the comments here, it allows for just the financial obligation of, of the signature by the controlling parties of the benefit district to be formed. I think we don't have any problem with that.
Is the development that was shown on the previous slide, are, are you ready to proceed with that whole thing or just, uh, you just have commitments for...
I've got a laser pointer here, Jeff. If you want to outline the shops and hard corner.
The scope of what we're talking about right now, this, this is being finalized with the architects right now, uh, and we'll be pursuing building permits. We've got obligations both signed and soon, coming soon, if you will. The hard corner is what I'm referring to right here. Uh, I would anticipate that contract being signed by the end of the week. Uh, however, they have got a lengthy due diligence period. So actual development of that hard corner is probably an excess, before they would start turning ground, I would say is in excess of six months away.
How about the rest of the building?
Then the balance of it, the reason we've done, is you're seeing this all plotted into one, one piece is because we're trying to maintain some flexibility. We're pursuing a number of different options and some of the uniqueness of this development is that we're offering a number of different, I mean, the developers are willing to build the suit for a tenant. We would also be willing to sell ground if someone wanted to own and build their own office, for example. Uh, so we're kind of waiting to see how the market comes to us. We'd love nothing more than to be able to come in and say, this is the way it's going to be, but this market being inside, you know, in the conditions of the market, we're kind of letting the market dictate to us. So we're trying to maintain some flexibility back here. That's why we've just set it aside in one other lot. You may see, we may be in front of you breaking that up further as, as the market demands.
Jeff, what do you see going into most of these buildings? Are you looking more, uh, commercial? Are you looking more office? It looks like maybe a bank right here on that...
What do I see?
Yeah.
This is, this is a bank. This actually announced, this is a security savings bank right here.
Okay.
They're going to move from their current location down there. Uh, that's, that's been made public. Uh, I think that I've, I've, I'm pursuing retail pretty heavily. I think ultimately and realistically, we're going to be looking at a mixed use. Uh, we will also feel like it's an excellent location for some medical application by virtue of some of the trends in medical and getting closer to the, to their customers and to the residential areas instead of being essentially located. So we, we've talked to a number of different groups about possible uses in there, but again, we just aren't in a position to say it's going to be all of one and none of the other until the market kind of tells us. We are pursuing one retailer that I would, if I were king for a day, it would be them and they would, they would finish it out for us. They would, they would, uh, take the balance of the property, but...
The backside?
Yeah.
Yeah. Your hard corner that you're looking at, is that a retail location?
That'd be a retail application.
And all single-story buildings here? Anything taller?
Currently, currently there is some, I mean, we have had some conversation with, particularly with some of our office users in the rear, as we've talked to them through design and just the whole process, where there has been some conversation on what's the benefit of going multiple-story and things of that nature. But currently it's all been, uh, single-story.
Single-story.
Yeah. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to see any of the elevations or if you saw it in the paper on the shops at Meadow Point. It's going to look more like a Bradley Fair type elevation in, on Rock Road in Wichita. It's going to be, it'll be done very nicely. I mean, it's, it's going to be a nice-looking facility. And we'll maintain, maintain architectural theme throughout Meadow Point, uh, all of our agreements and contracts. So you're going to see a lot of similarities from an elevation architectural standpoint all through the, all through the development. One of the things, one of the things that developers are adamant about maintaining and, you know, so there'll be continuity throughout Meadow Point. Retail or professional services.
If a business was interested in buying more, you have broken down 10,020, can a business buy more than...
Absolutely. What you're seeing in the rear there, the stuff up front's real close to where we're going to end up being, I believe. The stuff in the rear is purely conceptual, just to help people understand where we, what we envision it being. That could, again, if, if I had my way, that would be one major retailer, retailer sitting across the back, the balance would be parking. So, but the, the rest of this is, you know, we were pursuing a 15,000 square foot medical user on the, in that corner up there. We drew it in there to kind of give them an idea how it might sit. This is conceptual at this point. It's, yeah. You know, if we had somebody that needed, wanted to build a 5,000 square foot office back there, we could work out a, you know, we'd sell them the ground and, and move forward. And that's why we've made, needed to maintain that flexibility back there because we don't know exactly how we need to break it up yet. We do know on the front at this point, the, the rear's forthcoming.
Okay.
I just have a question for you, Dean. Do you know by some chance how much traffic goes by Ohio Street on a daily basis?
22,000.
22,000.
That's something Jeff probably has to tell his tenants, so...
We talk, we talk quite frequently about that, yeah.
We, we looked at that when we were looking at the curb cut there on Ohio.
Any concerns about Cloud Street?
Cloud Street today does not meet, um, city standards from the standpoint that doesn't have curb and gutter and that, uh, type of thing. But there is 80 feet of, of right of way there. The intersection is, is done for having turn lanes. I think I'd defer that, um, to Mr. Stack and see if, if the, if the cloud section east of Ohio was on the radar for future street improvements, but it, it's likely to be done something on more of a city large basis. And the surface itself is not in terrible condition. It just doesn't meet city standards.
I just thought that if, if there's one large retailer back there, that's going to carry, or we hope it will carry a lot of traffic.
Yeah, but it's pretty, it's a pretty slow street over there. I mean, there's not a lot of traffic on that section of Cloud.
Yeah, yeah.
I think even if you had a major retailer, it'd be more than adequate.
I think you'll see here, this, the entrance, if you look, the main entrance is what we're, frankly, we're hoping we'll, we'll see quite a, I mean, that's where we're going to brand the, the subdivision, so on and so forth. That'll be one in and then a right, a right in, a left out. We, we're designing that entrance to be a little larger to get people to be able to get out onto Ohio safely.
And southbound won't, won't be able to turn there, I assume? Are there...
You'll have full, it'll be a full access entrance there between the shops and the, and what's here. Sorry, Dean. I've got your pointer. You need to probably have this right there.
You've got a median in there.
That's envisioned to be a full, full access point. In other words, any and all directions, not, not limited. And the same with the Claflin entrance to the north. I guess we'd want to let Mr. Stack weigh in a little bit about the current condition of Cloud Street and whether that's on any of the lists that he's aware of for contemplated improvements, but...
Well, I'm not, I'm not aware of any, um, future improvements on Cloud, but just riding my bike over there last night, just noticed that it definitely needs, it's, uh, had some development there and it's going to need to be improved at some point. So it's something that our staff will be looking at in our CIP process to try and get that on the radar, especially if this, if there definitely is more development here in the future. Um, it is a dead end, so it does help, but it's pretty deep ditches and starting to serve quite a bit of, of traveling residents in that area. So we think it'll definitely be on the radar at some point.
We just added another little...
Development.
Development.
Yeah, Red Fox is just...
Curb and guttered at this, at Ohio.
Right at Ohio.
Maybe, yeah, right at Ohio it is.
No returns.
Yeah. And then it, it becomes a ditch after that, on the north side, I know, anyway.
You'd probably improve it then if development took place. One other question, are there sidewalks along Ohio on the east side?
There are, yes.
Yes. All the way.
On the east side?
They're kind of disguised by that tree line there, but there, there is an open sidewalk there and actually there's, there's a number of, there's a, um, some residents of OCCK that, um, that go back and forth along there because they have a facility on Albert and they use that sidewalk very regularly. And it's, it's a continuous sidewalk all the way down to Albert.
Hmm. Somehow I can't visualize it.
Now, there is no sidewalk on Cloud and part of the reason for that is what Mr. Stack referred to, which is the, the ditches on the north side, which aren't conducive to building sidewalks, so...
When we curb and gutter, I think we'll put sidewalks in.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you bet. Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other one in the audience want to address an issue here? If not, I'll bring it back to the bench over here and, for further discussion and hopefully some action.
Well, I would move approval of application P-81-7B.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion, questions? If not, let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carry, 5-0. I think that's the end of the agenda, isn't it?
No.
Yeah, there's one more.
They hope not.
Thanks for coming.
Item number seven. Requested, request submitted by Stutzman Greenhouse for modification of conditions of approval imposed on the special use permit, uh, number SUP-07-1. Approval for a seasonal open-air market slash retail garden center located at the northeast corner of Cloud and South 9th Street. Dean?
I think I will refer you to a letter that's attached after the original application. We had some black and white photos in your packet that probably don't do, uh, aren't very clear. And I think we have those available for, for viewing at that meeting. But if we go back to our initial establishment of this location as a seasonal open-air market, that initial discussion occurred on January 16th, 2007. And the planning commission voted four to two to approve, um, Stutzman's plan to lease the site from Kansas Wesleyan and operate an open-air market here, uh, subject to certain stipulations, one of which was that the portable structures, which included the shade structure, be removed from the site at the end of the selling season. As part of the, um, approval, um, staff recommended and was made a requirement that the, uh, in that metal shade structure there, that the wind load capacity and anchoring system that was proposed be submitted to and approved by the building official prior to placement of the shade structure on the site. And, uh, the argument advanced by Stutzman's was that the, um, those anchoring system requirements were exten, more extensive and more permanent in nature than what they had anticipated or what they had experienced elsewhere. And so their request at the end of the 2007 growing season was that because of the nature and extent of that anchoring system that was required to meet building code, that the shade structure was no longer as portable and that it could be time-consuming, costly and damaging, um, to the concrete and the structure itself if they had to remove and, and haul that off for the winter. That request was presented to the planning commission on November 7th of last year. And after a fairly lengthy discussion, I believe, the commission decided that the garden center that they looked at and approved in January was done so with the understanding that the site would be, that it would be seasonal and the, the site would be cleared until the next growing season. So the request to leave the structure up was denied. The superstructure was taken down and hauled back to Hutchison. Then in February of this year, you conducted a hearing to consider whether that permit should be renewed for 2008. Um, we kind of had the same discussion about the permanency of the structures. And in the middle of that discussion, a compromise was offered, a compromise of sorts. And what that compromise offered was that the metal superstructure there, that that be taken down and that it be allowed to be stored on the site instead of hauled back on the highway to Hutchison. And so that that would occur at the end of the, the growing season. With the attached letter, a written request that you have in front of you today is that the metal superstructure that's there be permitted to remain intact on the site over the winter months and secured, uh, as Stutzman's does at some of their other retail locations. And again, their concern is about possible damage to the structural supports caused by that continual disassembly and assembly of the frame structure. Again, because this was renewed in 2008 and you had adopted a compromise position that allowed it to be disassembled and stored on site, um, this request is a, a judgment decision for you to make, taking into account, uh, public safety, neighborhood aesthetics, the zoning of the property, and then the discussion again of what constitutes temporary and, and permanent use of the property. So you have the, the written request in front of you. And again, your alternatives would be, um, that you could decide that everything on the site should be seasonal and temporary and that it should be cleared entirely. You could reference your February decision, um, to require the disassembly, but allow disassembled sections to be stored on site. Or you could decide that because of the investment, the type of anchoring system we're talking about to meet building code requirements, that we're really not talking about a, a structure that's portable anymore and that it should be allowed to remain on the site. I think what we would defer to the applicant is how, how they envision leaving it in place, how they would, um, what steps they would make to, to secure it in terms of fencing or other things. And, uh, I think these, some of these photographs were taken from other locations. So with that, first of all, I would accept any questions about the report or the request. And then I would say that we should hear from the applicant to further explain their request.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
I'll jump right in. Has the staff seen anything quantitative or any mechanical drawings that relate to the denigration of the fasteners or any of the materials by the applicant?
I, I was not, again, the, the technical aspects of the support structure and the anchoring system and all was all worked out between the applicant, their design consultant and the building official. So we have not been really involved and are not real conversant with the type of structural... with the type of structural or anchoring system that's there. I think that's something that the applicant could best explain, but we've not, we've not been presented with anything other than, I believe, the applicant did indicate last year that he thought there was some structural integrity that was compromised by the, both the disassembly and the travel.
I remember that, and I remember that's where we came up with the compromise position on the, allowing them to stack it on-site, but in a corner. I guess the other thing, and I think that we talked about this last time, too, could you refresh my memory on what constitutes a permanent structure and what are the requirements of a permanent structure?
I don't, I don't know that I could articulate all of them, but if you, if you were operating here and you were going to have a permanent nursery and garden center, then you would have to have a structure, a commercial structure that met the city's adopted building code. That structure would have to be designed or certified by a Kansas licensed architect. Most likely, you would be looking at a facility that we would ensure that was handicapped accessible to the public and had handicapped accessible restrooms, and we would also be looking at making sure that there was handicapped accessible parking, but that the primary distinction would be that, that you would have a, a permanent structure with a permanent foundation that was designed to meet the international building code. And I, I think the primary differences would be that and probably requirements that would relate to rest, permanent restrooms for employees and, and the public. But I think the only other thing I would, would point out is that our temporary use provisions allow you to have temporary uses in any C-3, C-4, C-5, C-6 district. If somebody wanted to build a permanent nursery or garden center here, the C-3 zoning wouldn't permit that, it would have to be C-5 or higher zoning, and so this use is allowed here based on its temporary seasonal nature, not necessarily that it would be seen the same way and it's permanent, but primarily, it would be a permanent building on a permanent foundation that met the international building code. Of course, those improvements would be considered and taxed as, as real estate, and so I cannot tell you, although I know that this is no longer tax exempt property, my understanding would be if it's portable and not a permanent structure, that this structure's not going to be taxed the same way that a permanent building would be, which would be subject to real estate property taxes.
Mm-hmm.
And would have a valuation.
You're getting to all kind of definitional, definition problems here. How long can a temporary structure be temporary before it becomes permanent?
And I think we addressed that at the last meeting.
I think we've done it over and over.
Yeah.
I was feeling so good about the compromise, I'm disappointed you're back.
Well, I see it differently. I see kind of like the horse barns at, at Ag Hall. We don't make them tear those down every year. They don't have bathrooms, they're not permanent structures, they only use like one week out of the year.
But if they requested it today, it would be different.
I doubt it. I really do. I think just based on the tenacity, we should approve it. I, I see it totally differently. I, I think it looks terrible when the structure's gone. I'm the opposite of everybody else. I think that corner looks awful when it's not there. I, you know, it's, we love them being here, we think it's great, let's facilitate, let's not make it harder for people to do business in our town. Is, are the other greenhouses complaining or are we getting, I mean, I just don't see a lot of public outcry against this thing. I say, let them leave the thing up. I've told you, my parents live across the street, they don't care. The neighbors don't care, they're not here. We shouldn't care either, you know?
Well, at least we agree on the fact that they are very publicly well-accepted, and, and I don't think that there's anything, there's, there's no point of contention there. My point revolves around the fact that, is it a permanent structure or is it a temporary structure? And if it's going to be up for more than a temporary time, it's a permanent structure. And if in fact that's true, if it's going to be up forever, then it doesn't meet our current building code, so.
Or it's in the right zone.
Exactly. So there's, there's some issues. We would really like to have you just build a, you know, just bring the headquarters right here to Salina.
Yeah. Yeah.
Your name?
Officially Ben Miller, Stutzman's Greenhouse, 6709 West Highway 61, Hutchinson. Um, yeah, let me just quickly address, thanks again, guys, really, for, for the hospitality that we've sensed here in Salina, and I know, Patrick, you made the comment, I think, last time we had a hearing here, that you'd like for us to just come and make an application for a year-round location. Hopefully, I'm speaking totally out of turn, but we are, we are presently, and I can't elaborate much on it, but we are presently looking at, at that as a very real possibility, with a little different situation. One of the reasons that we're really looking at, at the possibility, and, and if, if it comes back to, we need to disassemble and leave it here, it is much better than taking it back to Hutchinson, that, that we, we would concur with. It, the, where we run into the stress fact, stress factor issues is the truss work. When it's all assembled, it is one firm erector set, but the process of handling individual trusses is where we were running into some problems with that. The location, and I don't think the, Dean, that we had any shots up here that really looked at, I think if you take your black and white, there were some shots up there that, from a location that we have in Pratt, Kansas, that showed some, okay, this one here really doesn't show the, up close, if you take a look at the black and white, you have one shot there.
This one from Pratt?
That's from Pratt there, yes, and, but you've got one in your black and white there that, that shows you, in the process of doing the erecting this, this spring, we went up with the structure, and then we, we quickly did a, an enclosure like we do for winter security, et cetera. And what it is, it's a, it's a construction fence, if you would, and it's not, we use a green rather than the orange, just aesthetically, it's, we like green a little bit better than, than orange, but that kind of gives you an idea of what, what that corner, right here on Ninth and Cloud, would look like. And Aaron, I, we're kind of partial also, is the place looks better with something on it then, totally bare. When we came back up here this spring, we had to, to haul off, and, and Wayne didn't know even where it came from, but it was, somebody had dumped a dumpster or dump, dump load of rock and dirt in there on the, on there, and there's been times we've come by, and there's been vehicles that are just, you know, kind of parked on there, and so our mission here in Salina has, has been, and I think I mentioned it from the very, from the very beginning, we want to be good neighbor. We want to be involved in the community here with different activities that, that go on here, and the community has responded well, and from what I have heard from others, even the local greenhouse has had an increase, and my hope has been, just because of the focus in, in what we offer, we hope the consumer is, is at a point where, where maybe catching the passion for what we have and, and the consumption is, is greater. Just a side note, I appreciate what you do as far as a community in recognizing well-done landscapes and the awards that you have for that, very commendable for that. Thank you for doing that.
Are these pictures from Pratt?
The ones that you have in your black and white are right here on Ninth and Cloud. The one you have up here, this is a shot here on, on Ninth and Cloud, this is coming down on Ninth Street from the north. If you were to look off to your left, right at the corner, is the, would be the entrance coming into it. You've got Craft Manor to the back, and you'll notice there are the concrete bunkers that are being blocked off, the other entrances coming into the, into the location there.
If you were allowed to keep the superstructure, what additional things would you do to secure the place and secure the structure? One of the things, I guess, as an engineer, that, that structure doesn't have any cross bracing, does it?
Cross bracing on?
Well, you know, structures like this without cross bracing can rack real quick, you know, just a big shift and it all.
Structure, as you see it, Dean, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is, it meets your 90 mile an hour code?
Yeah, that was one of the requirements, that it, it had to meet the wind and snow load requirements.
It does meet the 90 mile an hour code.
Be the last thing standing in that neighborhood.
Uh, that thing will, will not go anywhere.
Yeah.
And through the winter months, you'll notice also the, the shade material itself, of which would really be the only thing that would create.
Drag.
Any drag is off, and presently, actually, on Ninth and Cloud, it's off right now.
Are there additional cross members on there when you have the shade on?
No. The, those sections are 20 foot by 20 foot, and the shade actually goes across the top, and there's a bungee system that, that attaches them onto the trusses.
But there's no additional.
No.
Horizontal members?
What do you do with the tables? That would, those are, well, in Pratt, that stays. The Pratt location is an old Walmart location, right on the corner of 61 and 54 Highway, and Walmart built a new supercenter to the east. Here, we, the, the type of tables that we use here can be disassembled, and that we would go ahead and stack off to the corner of the property, where that's not a, I don't know that it would necessarily be, be unsightful, it's maybe potential for trash or something, maybe collecting maybe more that way.
Do you have anything from Kansas Wesleyan that they're okay with this, they're?
Yes. I just spoke with Wayne the other day, and if we leave it up, he might get a little bit more lease.
That's right.
Yeah.
Should renegotiate that.
How in your mind is it not a permanent structure, then?
Probably just in the fact it's the type of, of facility that it is, and how it's viewed in other communities also. I, I understand what you're looking at is, as far as something that stays there or it, or it, or it's moved.
Maybe I can answer that for you.
Okay.
You can take that down in a day. You can't take Quick Shop down in a day. That's, that's the difference.
Okay.
The fact that we're leaving it up doesn't change the fact that it's in, I, I don't think we're, we're not going to see this thing in 10 years.
Let's, let's take that one step farther. What if Quick Shop wanted to build a place they could put up in a day?
What if? They don't, they won't. And so, we can sit here all day on the what ifs. It's a, it's an impermanent structure. My thing is, are your constituents complaining about this? I don't know why we continue to vote this down. I have not heard one negative comment about this. I haven't heard business owners approach me saying, hey, that's unfair, it's permanent. I haven't had anybody tell me that's an unsightly structure. We asked if there was problems with kids playing at, we haven't had that. We've asked if there's trash problems, we haven't had that. We have all these negatives, yet we continue to tell these guys, no, how are we facilitating, helping businesses come into Salina by continuing to ask them to take it down? We should have said, let them level up the first time they came to us.
Well, there were comments at the very beginning, and people that were in businesses like that were concerned that we would be stretching the rules for this.
I would agree with him. I think the business overall has improved. I think since Lowes has come to town, I've seen houses get fixed up, since they've come to town, I've seen more flowers in front of any of our houses. I'm, I can only imagine it's increased the business of the other greenhouses just from, from competition. The fact that they're on such a highly visible corner has caused people to say, hey, you know what, let's do plants. So they've, I guarantee you, that's why they're not here now, because they understand the benefit of having these guys in town and drawing an interest in gardening and, and doing this stuff again. So I know they're benefiting from it, whether, like I said, if they really were that concerned, they would be here again this year saying, hey, don't allow it. I, I hear nothing negative. I mean, have you guys, I mean, really, has anybody approached you honestly?
We, we heard from the, and I, I can't remember the lady's name from the department of, deals with nuisances and things.
Judy.
Right.
You know, she, she allowed it. There was some trash issues there, blowing trash issues there, and, and.
And that was before the structure was left to catch them.
Yeah, and, and I don't know if anybody, you know, is catching any kids playing that or on that or not. I know your insurance company will probably know about it first before any of us do, but, but, you know, still, we come back to that, that basic premise, you know, what, are, is this a permanent structure or is it a temporary structure? And I think if we leave it up, it's a permanent structure, and then it needs to follow other guidelines, and, and I think if you take it down, it is a temporary structure.
Patrick, what, what are the differences in the guidelines under, under that scenario that you're, being referenced to?
Dean spoke to those earlier.
But, but it's, it's all a matter of definitions, I guess.
Yeah.
I've seen temporary things up for 10 years.
Yeah.
And I guess.
Well, this is temporary in the fact that the property is not for sale at this point from Kansas Wesleyan, and they're also hesitant to do a very long-term, and I wish Wayne was here, he could address that, but long-term lease because of potential of what they may do within as a parking lot in the future. Temporary to us, and, and I know this was something that was brought up, one of the first meetings that we had, on concern that, that I think from one of the guests in the audience had, about us coming in in spring and for, for just the planting season. Our model is different in that we are basically the whole gardening season, so it's, it's, it's year-long gardening program. So any other, any other location that you have here in Salina, and if it's just industry-wide, in most cases, the people that are also in the garden center business are not just in the garden center by itself. It is a, a process of subsidizing other things that they do, but they capitalize it on the key part of the year when you garden. I mean, we all garden about the same time, you know, spring through, through fall. We've just taken it to a little different level through the summer months with what we offer through that period of time. So in most cases, the other garden centers that, that are represented here in Salina, except for the greenhouse, is they would not operate as a garden center on a year-round basis by itself, because you cannot make money through, through that off-period if you have any type of, of greenhouse facilities, and so we're looking at some other things through that off, off-period. But, so from a, a, from a business standpoint, is really why you'll find most places that are selling plants will capitalize, you know, the time when, when we, we do gardening.
Do you have any other businesses that run like this?
The location in Pratt will be closing down also, probably within the next three weeks or when we freeze. We also have one in, in northeast part of Hutchinson that is also seasonal, our primary location, and if you can go on our website, in Pleasant View, five miles southwest of Hutchinson, is where we, we're producer. We produce all our material, and that's where the primary production operation is.
Do they allow you to keep them up in the other cities like that? They don't have a problem with, and you haven't had any problems with vandalism or?
No. The issue that we've had, as far as vandalism, it was more through some theft through the season, not off-season issues.
Mm-hmm. I'm trying to think, Dean, do we have anything in city of Salina that comes close to this? How about the chain link fence around that area next to Ace Hardware? Now, I know it doesn't have beams overhead, but you got a fence, I guess it's a permanent fence around an area that they, where they sell plant material.
They, they have a greenhouse building there, which was damaged in the windstorm that they're planning to rebuild.
And don't they leave their structure up without the covering on it all year round?
It, it has a roof on it. It's an actual greenhouse.
Uh-huh.
How about that, the addition that's on the north side of Lowes? Is that built to international or national building code? You know, that's kind of a shade structure.
They have. They have two things. The shade structure that's attached to the building would be part of, an integral part of the building would have been designed by an architect to meet the international building code. The fences, like what you have around the perimeter of Lowes there, are fences. That's, those are structures, they're not buildings. But I guess one could argue that any fence is potentially not permanent, but we generally treat fences like they're permanent structures. But places like Southern's, or Ace Hardware, or other places that have greenhouses, generally the greenhouses stay up, but I guess part of the difference there is that those are considered permanent structures, and they're also accessory to a permanent building that's on the property, whereas we don't, there is no permanent use on this property. We consider it a vacant property that has a, this has a seasonal use on it.
I think the only problem that we're kind of having is maybe your timeline, maybe next year you're going to take it down, next year after that, or you're not seeing any kind of timeline here.
No. Our hope is to be on Ninth and Cloud as long as Kansas Westland doesn't need that property for something else. That's our desire. It is a good location for what we do, traffic flow-wise, and I know there initially may be a little bit of concern about congestion on that intersection. I don't know that that's been a problem.
I guess the two ways to look at it are, we look at it that the use, the activity on the property is basically April to October. That's when you have customers, that's when you have parking, that's when you have activity there. The use is seasonal, and it's inactive from November through the 1st of April. And I guess the decision that the commission has to work through is that whether allowing that, which is not the full structure, full operation, allowing that to remain, still constitutes a cease in the use of the site for its intended use, which is as a open-air market, and that is a structure that's left behind. We don't think that there's any question that the activity, the use of the property is seasonal and it's temporary. And this is something that's left behind, so I think that one way to look at it is that they are meeting the spirit and intent of what our temporary use permits allow, which is an activity that has a begin date and an end date, and it's use, the temporary use is ceasing at the end of October, and this is left behind but inactive. Or the other way to use, look at it, is that as long as the structure that's used by and associated with that activity is on the site, then it's permanent and year-round, even though it's inactive. So, if the belief is that in order for the temporary use to terminate, the site has to be completely cleared, that's one way to look at it. If you believe that the intent of not having active sales and customers in all November through April meets that, that's the other way to look at it.
Excellent, excellent point.
That's why we believe it's a judgment call for you and not something that's prescribed.
I noticed here in your report that, when we considered this last January, I guess '16, we voted four to two to approve Stutzman's plan to lease the site. I don't recall why two people voted no. Was it over?
Two of us voted, two of us voted yes, I think, yeah.
No, four voted to approve, you know, and...
Because I don't, I think the other two didn't want any limitations.
On the structure?
I think.
I think it was over that structural issue.
It was over the structural issue, yeah.
We were, we were not in 100% agreement at that time.
Well, I think what, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, I think what Dean says is absolutely right. If we're looking for an excuse to say it's temporary, the fact that they're only in business six, seven months, and really, if we're asking them to take down the superstructure, why don't we ask them to level up the parking lot too? Because that's used every bit as much as the structure is. I mean, at what point do we stop? What makes us decide that this structure is such a hinge point? I think Dean's definition's great. They use it seven months out of the year. They're temporary. The fact that the structure sits there and we've had no complaints about the structure should alleviate any concerns we have about leaving the structure up.
Will you be monitoring this site during the winter, through Wayne or someone, that if trash is collected?
We actually may be here quite frequently with other venture that we're working on right now.
Did you have to go through the same kind of planning commission in your other cities?
No.
They're nicer, aren't they? See? You see?
This is amazing.
That's why these people are up in arms over us. We've got to be a friendlier community to these people, I'm telling you.
If you may, I'll just share this with you, in Pratt, they actually pursued us about 12 years ago, and we held off at that point. And when we made the approach, it was more from the concept of what do we need to do to help you get here? They put us in contact with the Realtor, or the property owner from Dallas, Texas, that owned the Walmart property. And from that point, it was anything on private property, we have no jurisdiction at all. And so, we were kind of thrown back, and we didn't run into situations like that in Hutchinson either, so. I know you folks are doing what you feel is prudent and wise, and I can appreciate that.
As much money as I've spent there, I don't feel at all guilty. I hold my opinion.
And all I can say is thank you. And I'd just like to say again, Salina has been very gracious, the due diligence that we did in process of looking at.
I bet I spend more money than Mr. Householder there.
We do, but you better vote right, or I'm going to ask for billboard signs in every residential neighborhood in this town.
Flashing.
Yeah, flashing billboards.
We have had quite a bit of feedback, actually, from the community in reference to this situation here, since it's been quite humorous.
I guess the only disappointment I, my wife had is, I think we got there Memorial Day, and we'd collected all kinds of stuff, and we took it over to pay, and there was no, no one there to take money. There were all kinds of people there with loads of stuff and no one there to take money.
Free.
There are people with, you know, a lot of, that are salt of the earth, and you raised one here in Salina. I got an email from a gentleman from California. We closed at 3 o'clock or 2 o'clock that afternoon, let our staff off. Got an email, found us on, he Googled us and found us, and he said he'd been here, saw a plant that he wanted for a friend that they were visiting, it was $15.99. And he made the comment, he said, I owe you this money, and want to make sure that the contact was correct. And then in the end, he said, PS, he said, how do you keep from having people just walk off? He says, in California, you wouldn't have anything left here. I emailed him back, and I said, welcome to the Midwest.
Yeah, that's right.
We've got a lot of good people here in the Midwest. Any other questions? I'll just say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak to it? Well, we'll bring it back here and see where we are. From the discussion so far, we're not in 100% agreement.
Oh, yes, we are.
I think, I think last year I was willing to leave it up for a year, see, just see how it'd work, and I guess I'm still at that point.
Well, then that would need to be in your motion.
We need a motion, but I was just pressing right here on where I am on the issues, you all know.
And I think that too, I think it's a good point. We've tried taking it down a couple of years, let's see if he here gives us any grief, or if anybody complains, or?
What we haven't tried is the one that we voted on in February, to take it down, leave it stacked over in the corner, to not have any transportation degradation issues with the trusses, and to leave it...
Yeah, that's why they're back. I don't blame them. I agree with them. The cost of business is skyrocketing on and on and on. Let's try it at least a year. I'm for permanent, but let's, if you guys will agree to a year.
This will come back to the commission in probably January or something for the 2009 season?
Because if you vote to do this, then in 2009, we'd be looking at renewal, the purpose was in 2009, spring, to look at how it went stacked in the corner on the site. If we resume and take this up again in the spring of 2009, and you approve this request, then we would revisit how we thought the winter went with it remaining instead of being stacked in the corner. That would be the only difference. But the 2009 renewal would come back to the planning commission, and you can decide how you thought the winter went.
Okay, gang, what do you want to do?
Dean, just to clarify that, is that, when you say winter and for 2009, is that, would there be a hearing again in January? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, for renewing this permit for 2009, the...
Yes, my question is, it will only have been empty for two and a half months?
Perfect. No time for anything to go wrong. That's in your favor, that's in your favor.
What the approval that you made at the beginning of this year in February was that you would conduct a hearing in early 2009 to review the impact of allowing the materials to be stored on-site instead of hauled away, and determine whether the permit should be renewed for 2009 growing season. If you vote to allow the superstructure to remain in place, then you'd have a hearing in early 2009 to review the impact of allowing the structure to remain in place and to determine whether it should be renewed. And that, again, in the granting of the approval, the commission said they were not going to require it to be hauled off the site, they wanted to look at it again to see how that actually worked during the winter. So, I'd assume that would remain in place.
Okay. Motion somewhere. One way or the other.
Wow. I'm not very good with motions, but of course, I would move that we allow them, I think at least a one-year ability to leave up the structure, and we could revisit in that February, that's only two and a half months, but I just, I really think we should have allowed this in the first place. I'm disappointed in the town for putting, first, we had the room requirements and those required, but we're just, we're being a difficult town to deal with. I know this is a long motion, but we'll start at the end. I guess this is my final speech before. I know other communities are like this. Other communities work with businesses and everything. We've had, I mean, you saw in the paper how the contractors and city is getting troublesome. Let's be a good neighbor. Let's let them leave it up for a year, let's see what happens. So, that's going to be my motion, is that we...
A motion there somewhere.
I second it.
And a second, and then a sense of the motion is to allow the structure to remain up during the off-season. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to vote aye. All those opposed, say no.
No.
So, I guess it carries...
We have a show of hands for Alyssa. All those in favor of the motion? Okay, and then those opposed?
Three, two.
Majority of a quorum.
And I'll add, if you get any hate phone calls, just give them my phone number. They can call me, I'll gladly take the heat.
We'll refer you to everybody.
I never check my home phone anyway.
Okay, that's taken care of. Do we have any other items?
Yeah, we want to hastily move through other matters to allow people to be fed.
Yeah, other matters.
And what we have occurring at 7 o'clock in this room is a joint meeting with the planning commission, city commission, with Gould Evans Planning Consultants, where they're going to discuss the outline of the parameters of draft plan and some implementation measures that they've been working on. So, we will actually reconvene in this room at 7 o'clock. Some of you have been contacted by Alyssa, and because of the lengthy agenda that we anticipated and the lack of a good break between time, we have some food upstairs in room 201. That is for staff and commissioners to consume, so they don't have to run off somewhere. And so, at adjournment, there is some food available upstairs in the conference room in room 201, for those of you who might have made arrangements with Alyssa ahead of time. But we will reconvene in this room for a joint study session at 7 o'clock. And then 21st, we will be meeting, and should have Georgetown Villas ready to go. Timberline addition on Wes Crawford, and we have a final submittal on Grand Prairie, which is the subdivision south of the golf course. If we have time, we'll find something else, but that's probably going to be enough.
Yeah, I'll find it. Meeting is adjourned.
Are we resuming these positions, or does this...
What we're going to do is, we're going to probably have, spin this around, have them address the audience.
Uh-huh, okay.
Patrick?
Yes.
I'll not be here until 14.